Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo. Mr. President.
Here.
An affidavit is on file for the meeting and public hearing and our current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted on each of all the legislative chambers.
Good evening. Welcome to the public hearing for the 2020 City of Omaha Budget and Capital Improvement Program. We're pleased that you are here to provide input on the recommended budget. Tonight's public hearing is conducted in accordance with the requirements of the Omaha City Charter. To make tonight's proceedings as efficient as possible, we will follow the procedures that have worked well in the past. We'll ask the city clerk, Elizabeth Butler, to describe the procedures for tonight's hearing.
This public hearing is for the Recommended 2020 City of Omaha Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. There is a sign-in sheet at the entrance of council chambers. Please submit the completed form to city clerk staff. The council president will call you to the podium when it is your turn to speak. We ask that you keep your comments limited to the budget and capital improvement plan and that you speak for no more than three minutes. The light at the podium will turn yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining in your time. Please summarize your comments at that point. When the light turns red, your time has expired. If you have written out your presentation, please consider stating your name and address and submitting the presentation for council members to review later. Your written comments will become part of the official record. Please note that council members and other city officials are here to listen to your comments. They do not respond or debate the issues tonight.
After this public hearing, the council's budget review process continues. Council members will consider your input as we continue to review the recommended budget. We are scheduled to vote on the budget at our regular council meeting on Tuesday, August 27th at 2:00 p.m. I ask everyone to be considerate of your fellow citizens tonight by focusing your comments on the budget, staying within your allotted time, respecting the light system, and being respectful of views that may differ from yours. In addition, we ask that you turn off or silence your cell phones at this time. We'll now commence with the first speaker, who is Andrew Sullivan with Doug Kagan on deck.
Didn't expect to be first, but here it goes. My name is Andrew Sullivan, 7748 Western Avenue. I want to thank the council president and council members for listening to me. I know many of you have heard of me before. I'm actually speaking against the budget simply for one matter. I would expect it to be a little bit more restraint in some of the growth of the government and that it'd be a little bit more fairer to those that are actually paying into it. And right now, there's no proposal in the budget to lower the levy. And right now, a lot of my neighbors have had their property valuations go up $13,000, $20,000, and so forth. And my valuation just got, my chance to tack a valuation got defeated. But there's one other aspect I want to bring real quickly is regarding the roads. There's a lot of propaganda and misinformation about some of our roads. We talk about $300 million of unimproved roads. Realistically, 95% of those roads don't need to be improved because they're your dead-end roads, a small, short road with a couple houses on it, and don't need anything done to them. Franklin Street between '93 and '96, gravel road. No one's worried about it. Why? Only a few cars go across it. If there's a hole, a bag of gravel takes care of it. Then you've got a street like Western Avenue, the street I live on. It gets paved in one section, and then another section gets concrete, and then the other section gets completely ignored. And so a lot of us neighbors can't figure out what's the strategy here on the roads. And it gets confusing. I've often suggested that Western Avenue would just be cut off at Coal Creek Road. It'd make the neighborhood quiet and would reduce costs and expenditures. Then you've got a third example of a road. Shamrock Road between 84th and 90th Street. It's one of the unimproved roads, but it's a street-to-road. And what I mean by that is it's got an open drainage sewage, it's got chuck holes in it, and because it's between a school, a church, and a mall, the countryside village, lots of people drive over it. So you could fix 99% of the roads, but if any one of them drive over Shamrock Road, they say Omaha roads suck. That road's been dilapidated for months on the northern side of it. On the eastern side, not so bad. But that's the thing that causes alarm and causes people to scream for more expenditures on roads. Realistically, if the Public Works Department and the Planning Department strategize a bit better, we really wouldn't have to spend much more money on the roads. We would fix those roads that cause the most problems and most complaints. And I would hope the council focus on that. Again, we want, we know we have to pay for some of this stuff. I would expect, though, in some areas, we really spent more than we needed to. And I hope the council takes a view of some of those areas in the budget of those expenses. Thank you.
Thank you. The light system's malfunctioned, so I've asked the vice president to assume a responsibility for this meeting. He's now more important than ever if you're speaker because he has this, it's three minutes. And he'll start once you finish with your name and address.
Good evening, Doug Kagan.
I'm sorry, Doug. Kate Kelly's next.
Good evening. Doug Kagan, 416 South 130th Street, representing Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. We see many positives in the mayor's budget. It concentrates additional spending on necessary basic services, specifically in the police and fire department budgets. Expanded neighborhood cleanups and fall cleanup, savings from increased use of online payments and transactions. The law department is saving money by settling cases out of court, thus not requiring police time to testify. Street lighting expenses will fall 5% every year because of increased use of LED lights. The city council and several city departments saving money through employee attrition. These are all good things. The mayor has shifted additional employees to lower-cost health insurance plans that feature health savings accounts and has moved more employees to high-deductible healthcare plans with increased employee premium percentages. Costs dropped by $1 million for employee and retiree healthcare costs. Insurance costs per employee dropped in several departments. Lower costs projected for retiree supplemental pensions. City bonded indebtedness is much lower than the maximum, 3.5% allowed. City departments are collecting private funding for services, for example, funds collected to plant trees in the parks. Police body cameras and increased mental health and crisis intervention training and an upcoming anonymous reporting system funded by private contributions and grants, saving more taxpayer dollars. The city finally will have a long-range plan for street repair and renovation. My Toyota is overjoyed. Although this budget does not raise the property tax levy, the percentage of citizens received valuation increases. If the city does not lower its property tax levy, these citizens will pay higher property taxes even though your levy's the same. So consider cutting more from the budget. The convention and tourism department budget would rise, although sales are increasing and lower projection for increased booking of hotel rooms. We are not competing well with similar cities regarding tourism according to the department chief. Although this department generates more money than it spends, local businesses benefiting from this effort should pay some of the costs in this department budget. We advocate eliminating or temporarily suspending specific expenditures not germane to city government, particularly from community service programs. Eliminate funding for holiday lighting, communities' development support, neighborhood alliance support, and truancy prevention program, among others. These entities can subsist on private contributions and grants. Finally, we have budget suggestions for council and mayor. Eliminate longevity pay, which is spiraling. Purchase supplies with other jurisdictions through interlocal agreements. And worker compensation payments scheduled to rise, so solicit interlocal agreements with adjacent jurisdictions to create a larger pool. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Kelly, followed by Erin Feigdinger.
Good evening, council members. My name is Kate Kelly, living at 4717 North 80th Street. I'm a constituent of Councilman Festerson. I'm a senior at Mercy High School, and I am here today with students for sustainability. I am here to urge the members of the council to support the continuation of recycling in Omaha through a renewed contract with First Star Recycling, which is currently not renegotiated in Mayor Stauthert's proposed budget. According to Public Works, Omaha residents recycled 16,973 tons last year. This residential statistic does not include businesses and schools in the Omaha area that consider recycling a valuable part of their waste improvement. Truthfully, Omaha is a green city, and every year we are moving faster in that direction. Major sustainability-focused businesses operate in the Omaha area, such as Veritas Group and Hillside Solutions, not to mention environmental organizations and local stores and coffee shops that make it a priority to care for our shared home. The proposed changes to the City of Omaha's recycling contract with First Star would require an extra $1 per month for each household, or 1.7 million a year. This is the true cost of the waste we produce, and we must stay committed to disposing of it in a just and proper manner that does not destroy where we live. If anyone in this room bought a coffee or a pastry for breakfast this morning, congratulations. You have paid, I am guessing, between five and six months' worth of recycling for your household. Furthermore, 1.7 million dollars out of Omaha's annual budget is minute compared to what we spend elsewhere. For example, the current renovations to Omaha's Jean Leahy Mall are costing taxpayers $3 million each year. I believe that recycling, like investing in public spaces, will lead to growth and development in our city in the coming years for under half the price. The more we are able to recycle and educate our youth about the importance of recycling, the better it is for our public health and planet. A major value of many young people in Omaha, including those here today, is environmental health and the efforts of our city to be sustainable. No one wants to live in a place that values profit over people. It is an incentive for young people to stay in Omaha for schooling and careers when they see a pattern of environmentally sustainable action. I would also like to remind you that First Star Recycling currently employs over 100 people. 100 citizens that are at risk of losing their jobs unless the City of Omaha decides to prioritize and invest in our local recycling. I close by again urging this council to listen to their constituents and the needs of our city. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my testimony today, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Erin, you're up. And I would just tell people, if you haven't signed in, we don't have many people signed in to speak, so we could end the public hearing and you won't have an opportunity if you haven't signed in. So please do so if you want to speak.
That was a tough act to follow.
Sure was.
I think I'm going to hire you. Talk to me after. And Council President Jerome, that was an excellent pronunciation of my name, which almost no one ever gets, so great job. High stakes, right?
I went out on a limb, and I guess, to be perfectly honest with everybody.
I'm just going to do a slight correction. Members of city council, my name is Erin Feigdinger. You've got the German version. I work at 812 South 24th Street, and I am the Community Outreach and Advocacy Coordinator for Together, Inc., a social service agency here in Omaha whose mission is to end homelessness. I am here representing Together to express our concern about the Planning Department budget and the necessity of hiring an adequate amount of inspectors and support staff to implement our city's new proactive rental registration and inspection ordinance. The fiscal stability of our city depends in large part on the stability of its citizens, and this includes our vulnerable neighbors. To ensure that stability, we need to tackle problems like poverty and homelessness that sometimes can seem too big and too complicated. But we can make those problems smaller and more manageable bit by bit by investing now in proactive and preventative measures such as our recently passed rental ordinance. Your passage of the rental ordinance is going to have a tremendously positive impact on the citizens of Omaha. This is especially true for those we serve at Together. An effective code enforcement system will alleviate the burden felt by many low-income renters across our city who often pay more for less. It will provide stability and peace of mind for people who previously felt they had little recourse to solve problems like a broken furnace, broken windows, ovens that spark when you turn them on, and unsanitary conditions caused by infestations and unremedied water damage, all problems that we have seen in the course of doing our jobs. An effective system will keep people safe, it will keep our children healthier, and it will make our community a more vibrant, stable, and equitable place to live. All of these positive benefits to our community will only accrue if our housing inspectors are given the staff and support they need. With more inspectors and staff, we can ensure that a man with disabilities does not have to wait two months for his landlord to fix a broken window in the middle of winter and that a mother does not have to keep worrying that the ceiling over her bathtub will cave in while her children bathe. Our city inspectors do an excellent job with what they have. We are always grateful for their time and attention when we have questions and when our clients need help. Omaha's master plan states that Omaha must be a community committed to promoting and maintaining a high quality of life for all of its people. And with the rental ordinance, we have moved closer to that goal. If a budget is a moral document, and I believe that it is, then let this one reflect that as a community, we care enough to ensure that no one has to live in substandard conditions simply because they cannot afford to change their circumstances. I appreciate your time and consideration. I know you've had an extremely long day, so thank you very much.
Senator Tony Vargas, followed by Jerry Sullivan.
Members of city council, my name is Tony Vargas. I live at 713 Conigliata Plaza. I'm here to represent Omaha Healthy Kids Alliance, or OHK. OHK is a nonprofit organization in Omaha whose mission is to improve children's health through healthy homes. Now, we are here tonight to express our support for the preliminary budget with a direct amendment request regarding the hiring of additional number of inspectors and support staff to implement Omaha's proactive rental registration and inspection ordinance. Now, while we appreciate and thank the mayor for the budgeting and yourselves for an additional inspector in order to enforce the rental registry and ordinance, our organization believes it is of the utmost importance to hire additional inspectors to allow for this ordinance to be truly effective. Our programs at OHK focus on conducting low-cost construction interventions on homes to address health and safety concerns. Repairs such as gutter and handrail replacement, mold remediation, and bathroom waterproofing are common and help prevent asthma attacks and common injuries in the home. Now, local and national data shows that low-cost repairs such as these can provide big returns on health outcomes for children. Forty-two children in our asthma in-home response program had collective 131 symptomatic days in the two weeks before intervention. After we completed our intervention and in the two weeks before our six-month follow-up, this exact same children had a collective 11 symptomatic days. Those children also visited the ER collectively 17 times before our intervention and had only four visits afterwards. These results show that our low-cost interventions help reduce the unhealthy conditions in our family's homes. Now, 70% of the children we've served in the last year are on Medicaid. With these children utilized our emergency departments or have hospital stays, it places an undue burden on our healthcare system and on taxpayers. Children with asthma are often triggered by unhealthy living conditions. Of the children with asthma we serve, 59.4% live in rental properties. 59.4% live in rental properties. The proactive nature of this ordinance will allow landlords to keep their properties up to code. When properties are kept up to code, secondary problems such as moisture issues, which can cause mold and structural damage, will occur less frequently. This benefits the health of tenants and their children. The property owners will also incur less costly repairs and the taxpayers who ultimately pay less for the health of their community. Now, when we remediate housing conditions that trigger asthma attacks in children, we see a significant reduction in asthma attacks in as little as three months. A proactive annual inspection can catch these triggers and may also reduce these conditions. But it is important that this ordinance has the people power to effectively conduct inspections and to enforce compliance in a timely manner so that these health benefits can be optimal. Now, this is why we are here, to ask city council to budget for a greater number of inspectors so that our entire community can benefit and the tenants of our city can live in healthier conditions. I want to thank you for listening to me, and I support the budget, but we want to make sure that there is more effective enforcement of this so that every single child lives in a healthy home. Thank you.
Thank you. And you went right out three minutes and two tenths of a second. Bob Benzel.
With Jerry Sullivan's permission, I'm going to go next.
Well, Gloria, I'm sorry. We don't have a process of yielding the floor. So Jerry, either you speak, or we'll go to Bob, and then the next one.
My name is Jerry Sullivan. I reside at 132 North 33rd Street in Gifford Park. Honorable president and members of the city council, all of the draft landlord registration ordinance as proposed by this body last March, including the mayor's version, acknowledged that a significant portion of residential rental properties within the city are not being properly maintained as required by code. Research has shown that the impacts to the physical and mental health and welfare of the poor and economically disadvantaged from substandard housing are directly reflected in additional costs for our schools, our hospital emergency rooms, and our social service agencies who must deal with these impacts. The downstream effects and indirect economic impacts of slum lords are devastating, but ultimately, the cost of these impacts is being borne by the taxpayers of Omaha, not the slum lords. I appreciate that you all put time and effort into the passage of this ordinance last April. If the ordinance had been allowed to go forward as originally crafted by Councilman Gray Jermaine Festerson with sufficient fees and charges to make it self-funding, it would have been a huge step forward for Omaha. The mayor Stauthert's insistence upon registration fees and other fees being eliminated meant that funding for implementation had to come from city general funds. Last March, the city finance department prepared an estimate of the annual cost of implementing the program based on Councilman Harding's version, which focused only on the existing list of code violations. City finance estimated it would cost $602,000 a year, and they'd have to add 7.5 new positions. Given this estimate, it's truly astounding that the mayor's new budget now only provides for one additional inspector. This program seems designed to fail. Landlords, even those in low-income settings, are profit-seeking after all. By not budgeting sufficient funds for a robust licensing and code enforcement program, the city is subsidizing the profits of these landlords on the backs of the poor. This council and the mayor have acknowledged that a significant portion of residential rental properties are not being maintained to code. Such substandard and deteriorating rental housing affects all of us who live in inner-city neighborhoods on a daily basis and erodes the stability and fabric and preservation of our neighborhoods. By not sufficiently funding the implementation of this ordinance, you failed to protect the poor and economically disadvantaged, particularly children, who are at the mercy of unscrupulous landlords while at the same time giving tiff financing to wealthy real estate developers. You've also failed all taxpayers and citizens of Omaha by not protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the general public and our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Benzel, followed by Chris Foster.
My name is Bob Benzel. I live at 132 North 33rd Street. Every time I've been here, you've started with the Pledge of Allegiance, and so I started my talk with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to skip down. Libertarian justice for all is an issue of ethics and fairness. Omaha and Nebraska are looking to attract more people to our city. We need to balance the housing needs of the new arrival with those being concerned with the conditions of those who are already living here. Are you looking out for their welfare as well? Are you demanding ethical and affordable housing? Your budget for landlord registration says you are not. Liberty and justice for all, even the poorest renters, should not be dependent on the wishes of the real estate investors. Justice for all should not be reactive but proactive. It should not just occur when a court settlement is arrived at or a person goes to prison. Justice for all starts with good housing, food on the table, and equality of life for all. Liberty for all includes the freedom from rats in your home, from leaking sewer pipes, from deteriorating roofs in neighborhoods. It includes safe streets and people feeling respected when dealing with the police force. The liberty of wanting to stay where you are because the housing is decent, affordable, and close to good schools. That is real liberty, and that can be provided as elected city representatives by providing money for a comprehensive landlord registration that protects not only our renters but also our neighborhoods. So I ask you to adequately fund the landlord registration. If you can accept political donations from real estate industry, landlords, and developers, then you can also ask them for the amount necessary to police their rental units, old and new. To do less is to truly make a hypocrisy of liberty and justice for all. Your budget should be reflective on the city of the future. Rentals that are inspected and secure, street neighborhoods that are safe. Provide for us a city where liberty and justice for all actually exists rather than a tagline at the end of a feel-good opening ritual. Handing over a city that is truly better when you leave this office should be your lasting gift to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Foster, followed by Lisa Kelly.
Hi, Chris Foster, 3413 California Street. I'm a landlord and Gifford Park Neighborhood Association board member. I'm the landlord rep. My focus is mainly on the registration because I think that can really save money in the budget and efficiencies. Big thing is there's a lot of landlords that hide behind LLCs, and it's very difficult a lot of times when somebody will call me and they don't want to complain to the city. They want to come to me and, hey, I can't find the owner. I want to try to solve this problem, get a hold of them. Then when I try to find that information and I can't, and then sometimes I'll go to Chris or somebody else, and it's very difficult. So I think registering with up-to-date information so us as neighborhoods can try to fix our own problems and not burden the city with involving the city if we can. And then we establish relationships with those property owners, which can help. You know, maybe there's some situation where, you know, somebody has passed away or something has happened where there's a reason for a property to go unkempt and so forth. The biggest thing, again, is accountability with landlords, and I think any good landlord would not mind their name and information being available, I would think, to the general public if there's a problem. Rental property is a business, like other businesses, and other businesses are, you have to register and you have to, there's regulations. So I think some regulations at a level are not bad. And I think just the last thing, again, in the name of efficiency, transparency, accountability, and ultimately really to save money and to help the neighborhoods be more efficient and help ourselves, really ask that you implement the registration and, again, with these LLCs, absentee landlords, that's a huge problem in Gifford Park and especially North Omaha. So, thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Kelly, followed by Chantel. Is it Ports or Portis? Lisa Kelly? Going once? Twice? Okay. Chantel? Going once? Twice? Okay. How about Marcus Fort Leroy, 4717 North 80th Street? Followed by Karen McElroy.
Good evening. Dennis Walsh, 2120 Spencer Street, Omaha Together One Community. 2020 should begin the process of changing to proactive code enforcement. Instead, the budget reflects a continued orientation towards reacting to complaints. In general, code enforcement is not set up to communicate with and gather input from the public. The administration says adding one inspector is enough for now. We'll do it like before but with 10% better. That shows they're not following their own research. At the March public hearings, Du Craven introduced into the record a guide to proactive rental inspection program. It lists the elements that determine the success of proactive programs. The first two are involve diverse stakeholders in designing the program and involving community-based organizations in implementation. Many community groups want to provide input to the department in design and implementation of the program, but a wall has been built to shut out that input. For example, on March 1st, OTAC asked the planning department to answer questions regarding the proposed ordinances. We were told not at this time, but later communications on April 12th, April 29th, and May 13th were simply ignored. Five months later, we continue to wait for the department's response. Public servants should not behave in this way. There is a better way. Minneapolis has operated a proactive system for several decades. On a recent Friday morning, I emailed the department a question using their website. That Saturday afternoon, the supervisor of 45 housing inspectors wrote a reply asking to set up a conference call with us to answer our questions. Ten days later, she gave us 40 minutes of her time to answer questions about how their program works, including introductions to other experts across the country. What a contrast. It shouldn't be this way, but it will take money and effort to become a proactive department. It has taken the Omaha Police Department a long time and a commitment from the top to embrace proactive community policing, and they're still not there yet, but that's the kind of effort it will take from code enforcement to change. We know it can be done. One inspector won't get us there, nor would four, but fully funding the ordinance with four new inspectors would show that they- that they are starting on a process of fundamental change. The rental ordinance gives them a structure to change. This budget shows a failure to accept that challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen McElroy, followed by Gloria Osterberry.
Good evening. My name is Karen McElroy from Omaha Together One Community and Holy Name Catholic Church. There are 80,000 estimated rental properties in Omaha today. The registration of those properties are part of the rental property registration and inspection starting in 2020. The work of the annual inspection on problem properties will also continue. The city says that there are 500 problem properties on the list. To have the rental property ordinance be successful, there needs to be transparency and accountability in its implementation. Both Mr. Fanslaw and the Chief of Staff, Marty Billick, expressed that if more inspectors are needed, they could be added to the planning department. OTAC's question is, how will they know if more inspectors are needed? What is the data that the planning department will use to make these decisions? It is time for transparency in the planning department. What data do they now have that shows that one inspector is needed? Have they shared this data with the mayor and the city council? OTAC believes that they make these decisions, the planning department will need to share the data that the department has completed as part of the ordinance. This information should be shared with the mayor and the city council every three months. Here are some possible questions that would need to be answered. How many properties have been registered? What is the city's projection of the number of rental properties that will fail to register and end up on the annual property inspection group? How many properties have been inspected? What is the failure rate of inspections of problem properties? What is the average amount of time it will take to close these cases? With the rental property ordinance, the planning department will need to be more efficient. How will the mayor, the city council, and the public know without sharing the data and comparing it to previous years? After years of our complaint-driven system that allowed Yale Park to deteriorate because of no complaints, the planning department had to displace hundreds of residents. The planning department remains responsible for the safety of all families in rental properties and that this is just as important as the new obligations for the property owners. We ask for leadership from the council to ask questions and gather data on the implementation of this ordinance. OTAC believes that the planning department needs to see the safety of the tenants is as important as the needs of the landlords. If Omaha is going to have safe, minimal standards for rental property, then the planning department needs to provide transparency and accountability in their work and make decisions that protect all of these citizens, landlords and tenants alike. Attached to my testimony is a letter and pictures.
You're at your time, so wrap up, please.
Okay. So that is from Hannah for Restore Dignity. I'd like you to take a look at those pictures, please, because they're from two weeks ago.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gloria Osterberry, followed by Susan Coolman.
My name is Gloria Osterberry, member of OTAC and Augustan Lutheran Church. When the city council passed a landlord registration and inspection ordinance and Mayor Gene Stothard signed it, OTAC's Housing Coalition was hopeful of the positive changes ahead for rental housing. But the administration's proposed budget only calls for adding one more housing code inspector for 2020. As my colleague, Mr. Sullivan, said previously, the finance department assessed and analyzed the original problem properties ordinance as proposed by Councilman Harding and determined four additional inspectors would be needed to implement it. That's why OTAC is asking the city council now to assure funding for a new total of 13 inspectors, not 10. A solid inspection staff will resolve fairly the hundreds of problem property cases that have been pending for months and even years. Coalition partners have elaborated on this, and now my comments will focus on three specific areas. One, the proposed demolition budget for removing condemned structures. Second, the need for a plan for helping vulnerable tenants displaced when their homes have been declared unfit for habitation. And thirdly, the need for housing agencies to be at the table with city planners. The proposed budget reduces funding for demolitions by about 25%. It's down to $800,000 due to the city deciding it has made headway on the large backlog we once had. OTAC is glad for this progress. We asked the city to give more funds for demolition every year for at least the past eight years, and over $1 million per year was allocated recently. Now we are told instead of over 700 structures awaiting demolition, there are just 100 or so. We celebrate that, but we do urge careful attention. Watch how the current enforcement strategy rolls out. If Omaha succeeds in holding owners of rental units accountable, getting them to fix problems and not abandon neglected property so often, there will be less need for city-funded demolitions going forward. We hope we get to that point quickly. Now regarding plans for helping tenants displaced in the inspection process, we know people are already being displaced. Residents are often told they are in a dangerous rental unit and must leave it. It is often that a tenant makes a complaint and then the landlord does not renew their lease. Several housing agencies try to help tenants facing displacement, but they are frequently overwhelmed with a level of need. You currently don't have a plan or budget to assist tenants that are displaced by code enforcement. We need this. We urge the city planners to collaborate with agency representatives serving the most vulnerable tenants among us so the system can curb displacement whenever possible and also respond to tenants' displacement. There are countless other ways collaboration will contribute to a better system. You have learned this evening who some of these agency spokespersons are and what are their areas of expertise. So thank you for listening to us, and we appreciate the opportunity to respond to the proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Coolman, followed by Lee Myers.
Good evening. I am Susan Coolman at 9242 Raven Oaks Drive. I'm a member of Holy Name and the OTAC Housing Team. As cities transition, it is important that departments and budgets keep pace, including in terms of housing. Like other cities, Omaha is seeing an increase in rental properties. The planning department needs to stay ahead of these trends and to hire sufficient inspectors to enforce the new landlord registration and inspection ordinance. It was passed to address current transitions and the problem of tenants living in substandard conditions. Necessary enforcement funding in the 2020 budget is essential to make this ordinance successful. Here's what's happening in Omaha. According to the census, from 2010 to 2017, the number of owner-occupied housing units grew by 7,000, while the number of rental units grew by 12,000. At that rate, by 2020, the number of rental units will have increased 27% in a decade. In addition to new construction, the increase includes conversion of homes into rental units, which decreases the number of owner-occupied dwellings in an area. So what is the city's response? Again, going back in time, the budget called for 10 inspectors in 2017, nine in 2018. But at the time of the Yale Park Apartments' eviction, it had only six. Omaha did have 10 inspectors in 2010, which is the exact same number called for 10 years later in the 2020 budget. Failing to increase the budget to add more inspectors in these changing times means that each inspector must now take on 27% increase in workload. This while housing stock ages and a new ordinance mandates annual inspections on problem properties. The math just doesn't add up. OTAC believes the proposed budget fails neighborhoods increasingly dominated by rental units. We urge the city to fully fund the ordinance, including funds for three more inspectors, and to make sure the administration actually hires well-trained and motivated people to help solve this problem.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Lee Myers, followed by Juan Alvarado.
Hello. Good evening. A year ago, you said you would improve the process of the CIP review, and this is better. Thanks. Glad we have this evening. We didn't have to do all this afternoon. I bet you're glad about that, too. I'm going to speak to the transportation portion of the CIP in the budget.
Lee, did you give your name and address?
Lee Myers, 105 South 9th Street. Sorry. I should know that. Moltshift has put seven years of CIPs into a database. That's 42 years of data, and we've analyzed it, but we had to put it in our own database because the city doesn't do it. It just puts it out in a document, a Word, a PDF document. But digging into that data, what it reminds me of, in a basketball, if you're driving this direction and then you stop and go the crossover dribble and go the other, you faked or fainted one way and faked it. And then, or if you're James Harden, you step back and do a three. This CIP, to me, seems, after digging in all that, it's a fake. It's a fent. And then you put it on the shelf, the mayor and public works and does whatever they want to do. It's a strong mayor system. Okay, that's where it is. That's the way it has to be. But if you step back from this fake detail, what is really being said by the CIP and especially the transportation part of it? I would say a couple truisms. First, if you find yourself in a hole, stop digging. If you find yourself in a pothole, stop adding lane miles. If you don't have enough money to maintain the lane miles you have, and then you're adding lane miles every year to that which you can't maintain, that's crazy. You have to look at these 10 multi-lane divided speedways you're building out west. 120th, 132nd, 144th, 156th, 168th, 180th, 192nd, plus Maple Center and Harrison. You're building 10 speedways in city, and all of those are adding lane miles. Where are you going to get the money to build those 10 speedways? You don't see the total price of those speedways because you just have it a little bite at a time. How much is it going to cost to build the speedway from 192nd down to the Interstate 80? It's going to be hundreds of millions of dollars, but you don't see that. And then the money coming in, the fuel tax, the gas tax, the state money, the federal money, floor bonds, it comes in a financial maze built on top of an enigma that only an accountant can like. But what you put out on your budget doesn't say where this $20 million of maintenance is going to come from. I think you can get another 20, which is what the 40 million that was the target. You could get the other 20 out of slowing down your adding lane miles of all these multi-lane divided speedways out. Now, those...
You're at your three minutes, so I need you to wrap up.
We presently regret doing the North Freeway. And you look back and say that was a bad idea. Future councils are going to look back at you and say, you're slicing and dicing West Omaha in the same way. You're killing the neighborhood travel. You're killing the neighborhood commerce. And...
Thank you. Juan Alvarado, followed by Luis Jimenez.
Good evening, City Councilman. My name is Juan Alvarado, 360 Titus Ave. First of all, I want to say I commend all of you because you're doing a good job. This is not an easy job. There's a lot of money that you guys have to balance. And I'm a firm believer, I manage a small business of my own, that you have to spend money in order to go forward. I'm not against spending the money. I'm just here to put my two cents. We have to be responsible with other people's money. And I refer to the construction budgets that we have. There's a lot of city funding that's going around, and I ask the city council to look into it, and I think we're working on it, but I need to address it every time I can. And I think this is a proper opportunity to see if we can come up with an ordinance that if there's a city funding project, we make the contractors who are exploiting immigrant workers, who are exploiting vulnerable workers out there, misclassifying as an independent contractor versus when they're an employee. My biggest issue with city projects, we don't have a resolution or a state ordinance that we want to follow. There is a state ordinance, LB 563, that prohibits the misclassification of workers, classifying them as an independent contractor when really they're an employee. I think if we're funding in any way, shape, or form, especially in TIF projects, that we should come up with a resolution ordinance from the city that we can govern that. That is our money. I'm not going to go tell somebody who's got private money how to conduct their business, but when they're asking for our help and our support, I think we should have an input in that, you know? And with that, I apologize to you guys. You guys have a tough job. It's a lot of money that you guys have to gamble. And with that, my due respects. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Luis Jimenez, followed by Larry Stor.
Luis Jimenez, 2417 Burdette Street. I'm accounting from Culture House. I want you guys to listen to me very carefully because I'm being serious. People here were talking about housing inspectors, needing more inspectors. Perhaps there's a federal grant that can fund federal inspections for the city. What I want to talk about is the budget item under community involvement. Actually, I'm not sure if that's exactly what it is. It funds community involvement like the UNMC Hospital and College. Millions of dollars, 3 million. Actually, I'm not quite sure if you guys are still funding that. I'm going to guess you are. I've asked the council and I've asked the county Board of Commissioners to fund gun violence research. And I'm doing it again today. Please fund with your local money gun violence research. I want to relay an incident that happened over native Omaha days. August 1st, a vehicle, a black vehicle without plates or registration, excuse me, without plates, it had transits on it, drove over the right-of-way of 2417 Burdette Street. And I went to tell the officers on 24th Street that that's what was going on. They said to call the police. The police told me to call the police. On August 3rd, sage burning, my friend Dewan was sage burning throughout 24th Street during the festivities. And it changed the energy of people that passed through the atmosphere. And he was told not to do that, even though people were smoking cigarettes outside. And then on August 4th morning, there was a shooting that was misreported and correctly reported by the news outlet that the shooting happened on 2417 Burdette Street. However, the shooting happened on Grant Street nearby. Mr. Gray, I told you that Burdette Street, the Culture House, was getting trashed on by other individuals. Culture House is the only property that has an in-way or whatever it's called in the whole block there, the street. And I was worried that probably we were going to get more than trash put on them.
Keep it to the Luis draft.
And we got a shooting put on it. So on budget, on your money, how does that translate to services? And I'm asking you guys to fund gun violence research. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Stor, followed by Ian Salzman.
Larry Stor, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. In regards to the budget, I just want to say I'm basically a ginnit. We need to cut the budget. We need to cut the budget. We need to shave some programs, particularly programs for social reasons. And the rules for debate.
Budget, Larry.
Excuse me, but this was not a meeting for OTAC.
You're out of order.
This is a meeting on the budget.
You've been warned.
Okay, take me.
See ya.
We did, this was not a meeting for inspections, ladies and gentlemen.
Ian Salzman, you're up.
You cut me off.
See ya.
Thank you. Members of city council, good evening. My name is Ian Salzman, and I am a rising college senior. I live at 5022 North Sunday Eighth Street in Councilman Festerson's district. I am here to argue for why the city of Omaha should renew their contract with First Star Recycling. Seattle has one of the most comprehensive recycling programs in the country. With this, the city has cultivated a nationally renowned identity as one of the most sustainable cities in the country. This program includes a number of social and economic benefits. First, it contributes to the well-being of the local and regional environment. Second, it encourages innovation among coffee houses, grocery stores, and other businesses to attract their growing consumer base of sustainably-minded, young, middle-class millennials. And third, it contributes to the local economy by promoting a competitive market for these sustainable businesses. Here in Omaha, we are attracting the same environmentally conscious consumer base as Seattle. According to a 2016 article in the World Herald, Omaha ranked sixth among the 50 largest metro areas in population growth among millennials between 2005 and 2015. Local business is already capitalizing on this change. The upscale Grey Plume Restaurant in Midtown is the only green restaurant certified business in the state, thanks to the exquisite locally sourced meals. Restaurants like Block 16 and Modern Love feature vegan meat alternatives in their staple menu items. Zen Coffee Company, a member of the National Green Business Network, incorporates environmental consciousness into every step of its model, from its quality sourced coffee beans to its zero-waste storefront. The T-Smith, the Omaha Farmer's Market, Coneflower Creamery, the list of businesses and associations that incorporate sustainability into their practice goes on and on. By eliminating Omaha's recycling program, the city undermines the innovative business models of places like these and institutes a vote of no confidence in the future of green entrepreneurship. Stifling innovation is not how Omaha emerges as the next great Midwest city. Sticking to what we're comfortable with, with what's familiar, is the model of earlier Rust Belt cities like Gary, Indiana, or Detroit, which were so reliant on the steel and auto industries that they were familiar with, that they failed to embrace the market innovations of their era. Their business collapsed, and their cities plummeted from the heights of their industries to the depths of mediocrity where they've remained. Omaha has always been at the forefront of industry and innovation. It's what's gotten us this far. But if we are to continue this progress, we must embrace this new reality of business. Sustainability is responsible and profitable, good for the environment and good for business. And this drive towards sustainability isn't limited to the business sector. Families and young people alike desire better public transportation, more bike lanes, more walkable streets, and more green spaces in their cities.
Kind of need you to wrap up, actually.
Okay, gotcha. Um, okay. In abstaining from a basic recycling program, our local government stifles our communities' budding concern for environmental preservation. You are, you are this local government, and $1.7 million is a small price to pay to enable Omaha to become the most cutting-edge, most sustainable Midwest city in the next decade.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick Wren, followed by the last person we have, signed up, is Cora Johnson.
Patrick Wren, 4903 California Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Sticking to the budget and potholes, there's a number of 200 million that's been thrown around that's needed to get those potholes fixed. Whether that's a legitimate number or not, I frankly have no idea. I would like to turn this whole meeting around, ask a couple questions, so.
Council doesn't entertain questions at this meeting, but if you have questions, you'd like to submit them to your council member. You can do that after the meeting.
I'm not surprised, no. Keeping to the potholes, it's paid a lot for with our registration and taxes that we spend on our cars. I recently bought a brand-new Altima Nissan. It cost me two grand to pay taxes and register that sucker. Now, in the council's defense, and my source is Chip Maxwell, a good friend of mine, a state senator, former county commissioner, editor of the World Herald. Out of that two grand, and please correct me, you guys are only getting about 16 to 18 cents out of every dollar that I spent. I'd like to know where the rest of that money is going, and it's going to a couple other government entities, but why are they in turn not responsible, like you are, to put that money towards our streets? Something is very amiss here. It doesn't pass the smell test. Keeping to the budget of 200 million. Doggone it, this is the worst winter I've ever seen for potholes. In fact, I ran into one right over by Memorial Park, twisted my right ankle, I got out, couldn't get the car out, my wheels were spinning, and they were spinning so hard, I heard this thump, and this came out of the pothole. This is a fish. The fish was in a pothole, okay? I vote have witnesses. I'm suggesting this. We have a problem with our streets. I'm not blaming the council or the mayor, it's been going on for years. I would like to have the people in this room and the council vote on the following. I'd like to have this fish mounted, okay, and stuffed, and either put on the mayor's front door, or maybe the public works door, as a memento to what every one of us in this room had to put up with. I mean, is that a fair question? I'm sorry, I can't ask any questions.
It was rhetorical, right?
It was a rhetorical question. Of course. I'm on your side, you guys. But you need to take more money for that registration. It's as simple as that, and I'm a very fiscal conservative. There is something very wrong there.
Thank you.
I don't have any fish in mind, so I'd like to apologize upfront.
They have an address.
Good afternoon, council members and citizens of Omaha. My name is Cora Johnson, and I am the treasurer and with Students for Sustainability, a student-led coalition which is dedicated to climate justice. Additionally, I would like to talk a little bit about my personal background. As a wide-eyed eight-year-old girl, I stood in front of the Yelkorn Educational Board and begged for a grant to implement a recycling program at Fire Ridge Elementary. Yes, you heard me right, that would be 2008 because I am a prime 18-year-old standing here, but I was given that. But flash forward 11 years, and I am here, asking you guys to do the same thing in Omaha, which consequently has driven me to wonder, why should we have recycling? Omaha is known for its cutting-edge medical care, baseball, and just for its absolutely amazing city, and that is one thing that I know we all have in common, is that we are extremely proud of Omaha. If Omaha has been a leader in innovative medical care, why wouldn't we wish to keep our streets, planet, and citizens healthier? This is not something that should be left open to new bids or worth spending $25 million approximately to create a new recycling center. While I understand that some support the proposed trash budget and describe it as readable and transparent for its proposed allegation of remaining funds to go towards, to change no cities, pardon me, to propose that the city does not have any change in property tax or a 2.5 restaurant tax. However, I am definitely the first person to admit that I would love to have a Coneflower Ice Cream Cone with a 2.5 restaurant tax. However, more importantly, we are turning the climate's one chance into an object which we value less than taxes. But we always seem to look over the fact that we are habitually excessive consumers. In fact, 57.3 billion plastic water bottles were sold in 2014 alone. While this is a shocking number, the world is producing over 300 million tons of plastic every year, which 50% of it is made for single-use purposes. And of all that litter, 14%, and of all that, 14% of it is litter of just plastic beverage containers, not including the labels or caps. Well, luckily, we currently recycle in Omaha, so we can turn that 14% of litter into recyclable goods. However, that may be ending soon, so all the waste will be put into the trash can. But, I ask myself, every week a garbage man drives down my streets and picks up my trash. So who cares? I don't live in it. I live in a beautiful city. Well, you're right. However, as you guessed, we don't keep the majority of our trash here in the United States. In fact, Malaysia recently begged the United States and other large countries to please stop sending our waste to them. This waste includes some of the 8 million tons of plastic that is dumped into the oceans every year, which was done in a study issued by the World Economic Forum. The country continued to state, we cannot accept the idea that waste from rich countries should be given to poor countries, and I couldn't agree more with that. More than an idea, Omaha has a moral obligation as a privileged city to provide for our citizens in the global community. I would like to personally challenge Omaha council members and citizens and city officials to vote to keep Omaha beautiful by reducing our city's waste through recycling. Remember to always reuse, reduce, and recycle in that order. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. That concludes the public hearing. It's closed. We need a motion.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 7 to 0. Meeting is adjourned at 7:31.